Good morning.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. We will start the meeting with introductions. I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Annabelle Ramil, Commissioner.
Zan Ojero, Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Vance Cronin, County Counsel.
Alyssa Rash, Public Information Officer.
Teresa Farley, Board of Staff.
Danielle Brown, Health Department.
Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department.
Ryan Neesha, Office.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Well, I see Ryan vote from the COG.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I didn't, I wasn't clear if you wanted to, non-Benton County staff to introduce themselves. But yes, Ryan Vogt, Executive Director for COG.
Morning, Ryan. And we have Nancy Wise.
Good morning. This is Curtis Nelson with Benton County Veteran Services under the COG as well.
Good morning.
Nancy Wise, Member of the public.
Morning, Nancy. Okay. Are there any announcements this morning?
Kate Porche just came in.
Yep. Hearing none. Any comments from the public? Okay. There have been no chair decisions in the past week. So we'll move on to item number five and open our work session with the update from the EOC and DOC. Generally, Brian Lee starts us off.
All right, yes, I will start it off. So, good morning, everyone. Just a quick update. The donations are kind of getting wrapped up. I was out sick last week and so was Ciara. She had knee surgery recently, so we've both kind of been out. We've pretty much got everything finalized out there and gonna have that buttoned up by the end of next week. So that, we're really happy about that. I will be coming to you guys to discuss, have the mitigation plan, grant funding, next session. So just giving you a primer on that. And then my last one is actually big news at the state level. The state has funded mask identification systems specifically through Everbridge for all counties within the state. So more to come on that. The actual details, the procedures and policies are still getting worked out. But overall, they are gonna pick up the Everbridge contract for pretty much everybody. So everyone will have access to that. All counties will have access. There's obviously gonna be some pros and cons to that, but it's already passed the emergency legislative session. So that's kind of big news and we'll see how that passes out here over the next few weeks in the report.
Thank you, Brian. Next up, Danielle Brown.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. So update from the Department Operations Center. I'm sure that some of you, if not all of you, have seen the articles from the Gazette Times about the testing event that happened over the weekend that was co-hosted between our health navigation team, OHA, and Casa Latinos Unidos, that we were able to get over 500 people tested in two days in both Corvallis and Albany. So wanted to give a little bit of a shout out to our health navigation team who staffed that. And the tremendous work that Kelly Volkman and her team are doing for outreach to the rural migrant farm workers and Latinx population for testing. So that was a big, a big event that we were able to host and get some good testing done. We have hired additional contact tracers for our communicable disease team. Those staff all were started last week and are currently going through training this week to get up to date on our contact tracing process so they can begin to support the communicable disease team as cases of COVID begin, continue to increase in the county. So that will be a bonus for that team to have some additional support. We have ordered medical-grade pop-up tents for use through the winter. We have three that are on order that are supposed to be here tomorrow. The turnaround on those was much faster than I anticipated it being. So we're pretty excited that those will be up, those will be here tomorrow. We are going to put one up at the Health Services Building to provide for some outdoor treatment space for behavioral health and the clinics to be able to interact with folks in person outdoors. We're getting some propane heaters and additional picnic tables for that as well to really have some protected space through the winter months for some treatments, some outdoor treatment opportunities. We have ordered the, and have purchased the shower trailer that we've talked about a couple of times. We don't have a delivery date on that quite yet. We will be working with our public works folks to determine what we want to do with that once it's received. We're hoping to be able to deploy that into the community for use through the winter months for folks experiencing homelessness. And the final piece of update I have is we have spent quite a bit of time going through our PPE cache to make sure that we have enough PPE through the winter if there is a significant outbreak or as we need to support the medical community and the essential workers through the community. So our logistics folks are working on ordering a large amount of PPE to get us through the winter. And hopefully we'll have that within the next few weeks to have in stock for, for the next foreseeable months to help manage the COVID response. So those are my big updates for today.
Great. Thank you, Danielle.
Commissioner Malone, if we could redirect ourselves to Suzanne Hoffman for a moment. I believe she has some updates regarding flu vaccinations.
Okay. Morning, Suzanne. Go ahead and give us your update.
Thank you. Charlie couldn't join us today. He had a conflicting meeting, but he did provide some of the flu information that you asked about, I think, last week. And so the numbers that he was able to provide as of this morning were that health center flu vaccinations are up 76% over the same date in 2019. Public health flu vaccinations are up 119% over the same date in 2019. And then county-wide, all vaccinations, so clinics, doctors' offices and commercial pharmacies, are up 30% over the same date in 2019. He indicates that we can't release clinic-by-clinic data, but it does mean that October 20, as of October 20th, 4,898 more flu vaccines were given in Benton County than had been given on the same date in 2019. So folks are getting their shots. I got mine yesterday.
All right. Annabelle.
Suzanne, you say the number's up from last year. You think people are really starting to pay more attention to make sure they get their flu vaccinations and so forth?
Yeah, I think that's what, I think that is happening in most areas around the state and probably around the nation. And part of it is because there's been such a significant campaign around, which always comes out at flu season, but I do think the COVID situation has made people ultra-sensitive to the idea that, yeah, you're going to fare better if you get COVID, if you have had a flu vaccine, if you get flu on top of that, obviously a very serious situation for almost anyone. And I think that public health professionals would also say that there are a lot of times where people don't take flu very seriously, even though data show us every year that it's an incredibly serious disease that hospitalizes and kills a lot of people. Perhaps the reality of the pandemic has brought that into clear focus much more than before. I think I have also a very big concern, I think Charlie would say, I hear many of the conversations I've joined him for, concern about the term you're gonna hear more frequently is a "twindemic." And if we, if we have a severe series of flu outbreaks in addition to the COVID situation, that obviously is gonna attack the healthcare system even more severely than the pandemic is. So lots of effort to try to avoid that.
Great. That is encouraging. I think I've heard from you folks about the reports from the Southern Hemisphere and the countries that took the mask wearing and social distancing and not-large gatherings had a fairly light flu season. So that is a nice model for us to try to duplicate.
Absolutely.
All right. Moving right along here. Next up, Lilia Neville.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
How are you this day? All right, I am turning on my screen. I think you can see it. Let me see if I can zoom in for you. So this morning, I thought that I would show you some numbers. Oops, that was a little bit too far, huh? It's been a little while since I've shown numbers. So today, I have just three good slides really for you. As I mentioned at my last briefing, the Joint Information Center is looking at scaling down over the next two months in November and December. So that scale down is not only from a staffing perspective, but from a deliverable perspective. So as we take a look at what deliverables we plan to scale down, it's of course very important for us to be data-informed. So we are pulling, we don't have October numbers yet, of course. We have a few more days until we can pull October. But we are caught up from March through September, so we can look holistically at the information that we put out over the course of the last seven months and make some decisions about carrying down. So this is, what you're looking at right here is the homepage of our COVID-19 microsite. So since March, our COVID-19 microsite has ranged from probably one page up to maybe three dozen. At the time, or currently, at this time, it has less than a dozen pages. We did a pretty solid pare-down of content in August. And so we think that we will be able to maintain our audience on the homepage while carrying down on our sub-pages. I don't have it up in front of you, but if I were to show our sub-page view, those really have plummeted, doesn't really seem like a nice word, but it's appropriate. They really have plummeted since we reopened in May. And to me, that indicates, early on when we reopened, we needed to have that very broad and deep provision of information around business guidance, reopening, et cetera, and down into the details. Now that unfortunately, we've had to learn to live, you know, die and be sick and as well with this virus over the last seven months, we're seeing that when it comes to website analytics, individuals really just want to keep up with our high-level case counts and demographics of our patients. They don't necessarily need that localized, very specific and tailored information as much as they did earlier in the pandemic. So that is our website, which we can see has steadily trickled down since the onset of the pandemic. Commissioner Ojero, your screen has froze for me, but it kind of looks like you were about to raise your hand. Did you have something?
I do have a question.
Okay.
The dashboard data is included in this homepage suite of pages, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so that data, I'm curious to know whether you have, we don't have that longer record in terms of how many views that's gotten, but I would be interested in that over time.
Yeah, I'd have to take a look at what date we launched it and then maybe take a look at the difference, because I think there are maybe five screens up there now, so we launched them a different time. But certainly I could take a look at that follow-up.
Okay, just idle curiosity, not urgent.
Sure. So I decided to pick Facebook as the platform to tell our social media story. I could have showed Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor, Instagram or YouTube, but we have our largest number of followers on Facebook, which means that we have our highest numbers on Facebook. So of course I wanted to show you the most impressive. So what you're looking at here is three graphs, actually. So that bottom graph, this line graph, you probably can't see, but all the way over here at the left, oh boy, come on mathematics, of the X-axis, wow, starts in March, and then all the way to the right, it's gonna go to October. So you can see right here where we have this pie, this is in May. And so what this is a line graph of is the number of messages per day the Joint Information Center has issued. So this number over here in September, in the middle of wildfires, was our high at, hold on a second, it's too small for me to see on that screen, I gotta navigate to my bigger screen. It's our highest 51 messages a day. And so for example, we put out 51 messages in one single day in September. This whole kind of area in here is September. And then above, our posts on Facebook reached 228,00, oh boy, my math is really embarrassing me this morning, I apologize, 228,000 users. And then on the left-hand side, I separated out our daily video, because our daily video has really been kind of a specialized strategy that we have embarked on over the past seven months. So our daily video metrics went up at September, as did our posts. But really, what I wanted to highlight was the posts. So we can see that putting the extra effort in, in terms of having the staff capacity to be able to push this number of messages out in the face of an emergency, ended up really paying off from a reach perspective. So I hope that was a really nice payoff to show off the work of the JIC, because the Joint Information Center did support both COVID-19 and the wildfire at the same time, and that was a very heavy lift. So I wanted to show off a little bit in that area. Any, okay, I don't think I see any questions. And then the last slide that I wanted to show off, it really kind of takes off from this line graph down here. So as I mentioned, this line graph begins in March, goes all the way to October, and the total number of messages issued, over 1,200, I think that's the total number. So the work of the Joint Information Center has been greatly improved by our partnership with the Health Department, in particular with Rosio Munoz, our new Health Equity Coordinator. She has scashed the Joint Information Center since the beginning back in March and has advocated throughout the emergency for bilingual access to our communication. So I just wanted to show off a little bit on Rosio's and really the team successes in this area. So again, this line graph is March to October total number of messages. So this is a zoom in of English-language messages. So you can see the English-language messages, the curve, well, curves to squiggles, align really tightly with the overall message squiggle, right? Well, when I pull out Spanish-language messages, you can see the alignment isn't uptight. And so what I really want to highlight is the work from September forward within the Joint Information Center and really how we have made, in my opinion, and I would say maybe in Rosio's and others' opinion as well, major strides in the area of providing language access and embedding translation process into our daily system. So yeah, I'm really proud of that, especially as our EDI coordinator recruitment is out there and Rosio moved into her role as Health Equity Coordinator within the Health Department. I just wanted to highlight that despite the fact that we're not at our quote-unquote daily jobs and we're responding to a disaster, we really are still trying to enhance county priorities in the work that we're doing. So those were my data points from the JIC to report out for you all this week, but I'm happy to talk about operations or anything else more broadly.
Any questions for Lilia?
I just have one, and that is that in terms of the JIC's day-to-day work, is it, what's taking, what takes the most staff effort? Is it just doing the research and background and getting all of those posts out? I know it's just kind of a dumb question, but since the JIC is off-site and away from everything else, I just don't have any insight into how, you know, how it works.
Yeah, that's an excellent question, Commissioner. So in terms of what takes the most time, I would say it really depends on what section you're in. So what takes the most of my time is certainly not the same as what takes the most of Cali Losi's time, or of Jonavie Stokes' time, or of Rosio's time, because we all, well, not myself, but you know, most of the others are section chiefs. They are responsible for that entire section. So yeah, so that's a tough question for me to answer. Each one of us would be given it different in terms of my time, what takes the most of it is, oh my gosh. I think staffing. I think staffing has probably been what I've spent the majority of my time on over the past five months. You know, it's been a challenging disaster to respond to. We don't necessarily know what the next week is gonna be like, especially in the early days back in April. And so staffing appropriately has been something that I've just poured hours into every week, probably since March. It's a huge challenge, so, but that's totally different than what happens in media relations or information gathering or information distribution. So I hope that that, is that helpful answer.
That's, it gives me a start, thank you. So those sections are community relations, information gathering, and?
Just a second, I'll be happy to pull something up for you. Okay, so excuse my brief dive into NMSICS, but this visual is going to help me explain this faster, you know, and I think more succinctly. So within our Joint Information Center, we have five primary areas. Information distribution, Jonavie Stokes is our section chief. Dani Martin, when she was with the JIC, was our deputy section chief. She's no longer with the JIC. So what this, these folks are responsible for internal messaging and external messaging. External messaging takes more time than internal messaging typically. Within our information gathering section, Cali Losi is our section chief. You can see that Rosio Munoz is a double section chief in both distribution and gathering because she is our only dedicated Spanish-language resource. So within information gathering, primarily, they spend most of their time writing. I would say secondarily, followed by verifying information and fact-checking. Media relations, Alyssa Rash handles entirely. When she needs support, I am Alyssa's backup. And media relations, I would say coordination, takes the most amount of time. The interviews are typically pretty tight in terms of timeline, maybe five, 10 minutes, but a coordination for a five-minute interview could potentially be up to three and a half hours, depending on the topic and who they want to talk to and where they want to be. Within operations, John Brayock is our section chief. And operations primarily spends most of their time keeping me on track, managing apps, ensuring that I have eyes on the pieces of our operations to make us work effectively and efficiently, because we tell a work and because our staffing has been a challenge. And then within our vulnerable populations and liaison section, this is in addition to the work that Rosio Munoz does, is information gathering and distribution section chief. This is basically media relations and community relations in this particular area. When the emergency operations section, what, I'm sorry, not section, when the Emergency Operations Center was activated from, what, March to June, and then July and August, our liaison section worked very closely with our vulnerable population section as well. So within each section, they have different priorities.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I really appreciate it. Thanks for taking the time.
Sure, no problem.
All right. Any other questions for Lilia?
Good job.
I appreciate your efforts and this was helpful. The JIC has been a little bit of a black box. I know you're active and, but it was helpful to see the breakdown of the different, different areas and who's in charge of what. So that's been, that's helpful.
Great, great. Congrats.
Next up, Kate Porche on economic side of the operation.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me. I have just a handful of brief updates on the funding side for you, and then one other item. So I wanted to start with the space where we continue to have some pretty significant challenges, which is the Business Oregon Grant. Let me, let me start with the good news. The good news is round four, and for those of you tracking at home, round four was the round that removed the tighter constraints on applicants and allowed folks to apply who had received PPP or IDLE, but there were some limits on that, as you recall previously. Folks either could not have received PPP or IDLE, or what they received was subtracted from the money they would get from Business Oregon. So the good news is round four, which was money that went straight to our community financial institution partners, is out the door. And under, gosh, 10 days, the fund that Community Lending Works and our partners at Central Atlanta Credit Union received was completely out the door.
Wow.
Where, yeah, and in fact, at this point, they, our Community Lending Works is over-prescribed by about north of $1 million. Now, that's not far from, I mean, that's Fed, LIM, Lincoln Lane, but still, it's a really big number in terms of needs. Where we're having some issues, Community Lending Works, everyone's understanding of how round four was gonna work was that there was this initial pot of $9 million, distributed out, and then once the CDFI drew that money down, got 90% of their fund committed, which had to be like committed to applicants and then approved by Business Oregon, then the CDIs were eligible to turn around and come back to the sort of round B, if you will, of round four of 7.25 million. Our folks at Community Lending Works did that. They called Business Oregon and Business Oregon reported to them that there's hardly any money left. And in fact, our Community Lending Works would only be receiving $375,000 more additional for all four counties. That was a surprise. There's some confusion on our hard practitioners and on the part of Community Lending Works as how, how the 7.25 was drawn down so quickly. Business Oregon, we couldn't really get a clear answer. So I'm sharing this background with you just to kind of continue to let you know that there's been some frustrations, there's been some challenges here, right? We're, we're trying to toe the line and do the best we can, and ultimately, all we want to do is get money out to our businesses. So that brings me to my next point. So I will say on round- me to my next point. So I will say on round four, we're continuing to talk to Community Lending Works. We're continuing to have discussions with Business Oregon to understand. But at this point, it looks like there's only going to be 375,000 more for all four counties, of which they've already got that, you know, times three or four in their pipeline of folks who have already applied, right? So this brings us back to round three. We do still have round three funds available. These, again, this is the, this is the funds that have the subtraction formula. So anything folks have received in PPP or IDLE must be subtracted. Community Lending Works did a random sampling for us. They sampled 50 of the round four applicants to see how many could fit into round three. And out of the 50, there were four businesses that would fit, and they would be allocated a total of $5,000. So pretty, pretty small. These, these previous rounds are really going to be very minimal in terms of what we can get to businesses. So I guess I wanted to let you know, our plan to attack at this point is to continue to market round three. This, though, is not going to be just like the other rounds where we push the message, people apply and they get money. I, we are going to have to step in and make phone calls, contact individual businesses. Our friends in Lane County have set up a checklist that businesses can fill out to see even if they qualify. Most will not. And again, we're concerned about the market confusion this is creating and frankly, the time that it's taking of businesses to go through this. But I guess I just want to communicate to you that we, our office plans to give it the college try, but at the same time, we're going to be measuring the amount of time and effort that it's taking us to deploy these round three funds because we still continue to get pushed back on the notion of allowing applicants to use the round four qualifications. For some reason, Business Oregon says no, it has to be round three, you have to use those guidelines, and they're unwilling to change. So we, we're going to make our best effort, but we're going to be real clear about how many businesses we try to talk to that weren't, that just didn't qualify, right? We think that's the best we can do on that. So let me pause there and see if there's any questions on the Business Oregon fund.
How much money is left in round three?
At this point, the entire 85,000 that we have from Business Oregon and the 85,000 matched for Benton County. So 130. The reason all of it is left is because we, you know, Community Lending Works, we wanted to market round four because we knew we could get it out and going right away with, with minimal confusion. And so now we're kind of pivoting back to focusing on round three.
Okay. You mentioned 375,000. Is that round five or?
It's sort of, I'm, my mind, I think of it as round four B.
Okay.
How about that? It's a subset of round four.
Okay. So the, there's been over $1 million of applications sent in and 375,000 of funding. Is that, are those two numbers matched up?
Exactly. Yep.
Okay. Is there any hint of adding to those funds from the state?
We are unclear. The state conducted a survey. They wanted to understand from businesses or from practitioners how, how much of our round three we had expended and what we may be looking at giving back. So initially, there was hope that they would take back any round three funds and then make it available for round four. I don't want to go too deeply into this, but I will tell you that what we understood from Business Oregon was a communication where they indicated, Business Oregon indicated frustration with practitioner partners like us, that they felt that we hadn't made a good faith effort to, to roll out the round three and that they would consider communities that didn't do a good job getting round three out to be ineligible for receiving those converted funds in the future. Again, this is a very confusing message to us. Ultimately, our, ultimately, we're trying to get funds that the businesses can use, right? And it's clearly, the data shows round four, that the way they structured it is what the businesses need. And that the requirements on round three and older, at this point in time, are reaching an extremely narrow, again, four out of 50 of the applicants, Community Lending Works is an example. And a very small amount of money, too. Again, I mean, this, we're talking about 1,000 to 2,500 that each business could receive. And we're also talking about an application process that is more, considerably more time-consuming and more stringent than how round four works.
All right. Is this issue before the emergency board or are we into the regular session that starts in February?
We are exploring how to best have this conversation. And I will tell you, we've engaged with our partners at the regional solution team, Sarah Means for our area. And again, I bring this up, I don't feel like I need any action from you all at this point. I will let you know when and if we do, but I, I want, I just want to make sure that my lines of communication with you are completely transparent, that you understand some of the challenges that you, that we've had, and that you understand, too, why we agree with Community Lending Works and the notion of really starting with round four. Like, again, we're under a time pressure, like everybody. Get the money out that we can get out, then we're going to take a look at round three, see if we can get it back. Again, I have continued to hope that at some point, folks would come to their senses and allow around three money to, to use the new standards and guidelines. But that's just how it happens. So we'll make our best shape up for round three.
Okay. Well, keep us posted on, if we can be of any assistance in this kind of frustrating process.
Kate, you may have mentioned it, but is the, what is the maximum amount that a business can get through either round three or round four?
$10,000.
Okay.
Per business. And round four is a lot more lenient because it doesn't have the subtraction formula.
Yeah, right.
Round three, anything they receive, either in PPP or IDLE, has to be subtracted out then of what they'll get. So it's really meaning that to qualify, either folks have to have received no money in order to get something, or the numbers are very minimal. That's where we're seeing 1,000, maybe 2,500 now.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. So real quickly, just an update on our CBVG funds. Props to my new friend, Rebecca Taylor. I know she's been working very hard to check the boxes required for the CBVG application on the county side. The city's application and funds are ready to go, but again, we're holding those until the county's funds can be ready. This is with the grant for retro enterprises that we're pretty excited about. I will say another possibility was brought up to us from Melissa Murphy, our regional development officer at Business Oregon. We believe we could use, we can actually, we don't just believe, we can apply for $50,000 in trust to help with daycare for either the school system or like our boys and girls for kiddos that are coming into Corvallis from the rural areas. We're very excited about this. Sweet Home has done this very thing and that's been really, really successful. So to that end, I'm working with Rebecca Taylor and our friends from Public Health who are on this phone call to complete the, what, the Limited English Proficiency Plan, which is one of the last items that we need to check off. So we're stepping in to just try and help Sarah and her team because I know they are up to their eyeballs, plus the little, just to see if we can get that piece done. Because once we have all the components ready, then Benton County can start to apply for these different items we think could be very beneficial. Finally, we did put together a list of some potential CARES Act uses for both Mark at the city and Joe and Mary at the county to consider and have, have been able to get that together. And we're pretty excited about that. And my last item, the business right-of-way in Corvallis, we are going to be standing that for our businesses in downtown Jerry's. Working on the communication for that. We have had a number of questions curious about exploring the potential of tents. And so we are going to look into that once we get the, just the general extension done, so folks know they can continue to use the basement. And then we'll look into the question of tents and see if that's something we can implement hard.
Okay. Well, that doesn't look like there's any further questions. That's a, that's a nice list of projects and keep up the good work. I think Joe had a question for the EOC/DOC group. Is that correct?
Actually, I don't have a question for that group. I have a question for the commissioners on this particular topic. Once the board has any, any remaining questions for Kate before we move on.
I think we're ready.
Thank you, Kate.
Thanks, Kate. Commissioners, on the topic of our EOC/DOC briefings, as you'll recall, when the COVID originally hit back in March, we ended up doing updates for the board twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays. After about three months of that, we then transitioned to once a week on Tuesday mornings. And as we begin to work more diligently on incorporating and systematizing our COVID response, I'd also like to propose to the board that we look at reducing the amount of updates that you're getting. Right now, you're getting them once a week through this forum. This forum requires a lot of time and effort by our staff. And I think the more we begin to incorporate and normalize functions, we can begin to refocus on some of our core businesses. Not that COVID is not a core issue at this point. It will continue to be, but we've at some point have to begin to normalize, if you will, things as much as possible. And I'd really like to provide staff the opportunity to free up their calendars because these, just this morning, you've had five or six people that have been spending an hour of their time participating in our meeting, let alone preparing for it. So I'm looking to the board to give me feedback on whether or not you would be open to going to every other week updates. For example, on the first and third Tuesdays of the month, which is in sync with our normal board meetings. So I'd like to put that out there and get your response.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I think the first and third board meetings make sense also.
Just as long as if we have, have something come up, then, then we can call it an emergency conversation. But first and third makes sense.
You know, something significant did come up, we would either brief you individually or
Yeah, right.
Call a special meeting. But I think our staff can use the time back to, for their other functions that they're responsible for doing. And I would also acknowledge, Lilia and I have had a number of conversations regarding the JIC, and you're aware of what, what we're doing there in terms of trying to scale back the amount of work and activity there. But we're also doing the same thing with our executive committee. Right now, our executive committee meets twice a week on Mondays and Wednesdays. Starting November 16th, that group will begin meeting once a week. In addition, we also update our department heads once a week on Wednesdays. We'll be likely migrating those to every other week as we go through the month of November. So wanted to make you aware of those other changes as well.
Okay. Well, I think this makes sense, just trying to normalize our functions and balance between COVID or other emergencies and normal business. To get started, looking at the calendar, first and third, Tuesdays in November, the first would be a week from today, the third. So I guess, even though that's just a week away, to get the pattern started, we can start next week.
Next week is goal setting. So I would think we would skip goal setting and then go into the following.
No, actually, goal setting's on the 10th.
The 10th? Okay.
The third is the first.
Oh, we've got a different week, different month. Yeah. Okay.
So our first and third for November are the 3rd of November and then the 17th of November. Goal setting is scheduled for November 10.
Yeah. That makes sense.
So we would go ahead and continue with an update next week to get us on the pattern of the first and the third.
That makes sense.
Okay, agreed. That'll be great. Thank you. I'll make sure staff is aware of our anticipated changes.
Okay. Well, thank you for working on this in, in various places to make sure that our regular business is taken care of. And it's, it's a balance, but I think that makes sense. Next up, 5.2 update from Cascades West Council of Governments. Are you leading that off, Ryan?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you so much for having us. In the, being still relatively new to the job, I have had the opportunity to meet most people on this call, but I did want to be on here personally to say hi to those of you I have not met and to introduce myself as the new executive director for the COG. We are thrilled to be able to provide quarterly information here in this forum around how some of our programs are affecting our communities. I propose the program updates. I'll be turning those over to Randy and Curtis, but I did just want to say hi to everybody. So thank you for having us today.
You bet.
Well, I'll go ahead and start, and then we'll allow Curtis to provide the veteran services update.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Randy Moore, and I wanted to talk a little bit about the Stand By Me program, which you generously provided funding for. And just, this would be our last official quarterly update for the program, but I'm hoping that we will continue to come and bring information to you as time goes on, moving forward about how Stand By Me is going. Since the last time I came and reported out to you, I just wanted to let you know that we did have an official coaches training, and we trained four staff from some different agencies as well as managers from different agencies. People who went to that training were staff people from Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments and KidCo Head Start. And so we were excited to get that training done at the beginning of October. However, what we realized is at the end of the training, we were just not immediately ready to start seeing participants. And we've been doing some shadowing and some other coaches' tool training since then. We have five, every other week, coaches' huddles where we're working together on developing outreach plans and those kinds of things. We do expect to have a coach for strengthening rural families. However, Paul at Strengthening Rural Families has been having a recruitment for that position. It's going to be a half-time family advocate, half-time coach. Unfortunately, he's had a hard time trying to get that position filled. So if you know anyone who still would be a good fit for that, please mention it to them so that they could potentially reach out to Paul about that position. Once that position comes on, we'll make sure that we get them trained up and they're, they're ready to go as well. The other good news that we have is actually the KidCo group, after having, you know, a month and a half of their staff person going through coaches' training and working with us on that, has realized that they feel like this is going to be very great for their families. And they've decided to send another one of their staff people through the coaches' training, and they will be Stand By Me trained coaches as well, so that they will be able to reach more family members through their, through their organization. So we're seeing that the people who are going to training and, you know, participating in our coaches' huddles really see the value of this for their participants. So we're pretty excited about that. We are working on having some coaches' houses in other areas, though, you know, trying to, especially the days of COVID, get everyone to the table and figure out what that looks like. It's been a little bit It's been a little bit challenging. We're pretty close to having some kind of, kind of agreement with the Veteran Services organizations in the three counties, including the Samaritan Health Services, Veterans Coordinator. So I hope that the next time that I get to report out about that, we'll have an opportunity to talk about the fact that we have a vet-specific coach. I think that the barriers that we're seeing right now and that we're struggling with, I didn't think that this would be one, but part of being a Stand By Me participant and going through the coaching model is that a coach is able to share with you a credit report. You can go over that. Stand By Me in Delaware, which we're modeled after, has a relationship with a credit reporting agency so they can pull those credit reports. We figured to say that it would be very easy for us to just walk right into that. It turns out that it is not easy to establish a relationship with the credit pulling report agency. And so if anyone has any creative ideas, we sort of regrouped and thought that we would use our lending department and community and economic development and contract with them to do that. But unfortunately, she, Sandra, if you know her, Eastdale from, from CED, doesn't have the ability to do that for us either. So we're trying to figure out how that might happen. If you have any creative and thought ways that we might be able to tackle that issue, because it is a necessary step in this process. And then just the ongoing funding for, you know, sustainability. We do have some grant applications out there. We're sort of a little off stride right now with the grant cycle. I believe in January and February, we have some real potential for submitting a grant to the Oregon Community Foundation as well as USDA. We've been encouraged to apply for those grants, and I'm hoping that, you know, at that time, we'll be able to receive some funding, some ongoing funding. They specifically like our partnership with Strengthening Our Old Families, so that's, that's good. We do have a new board, that's the Cascades West Community Development Corporation Board, who is going to help us manage the Stand By Me program as well as other potential future programs that stabilize and support community and economic development and supporting families and being physically stable. And that board actually had its first meeting at the beginning of October. We are going to meet monthly for a little while. They're working on things like bylaws and admission statement for Stand By Me. And they are going to help us develop and plan our budget for the next three years and hopefully because of that, be invested in helping us try to figure out how we might go forward with future funding requests and supporting us in doing some of that outreach and collaboration with others across our region as well nationally. So I think that's all I have for now, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Randy, do you have anyone from the, either the credit or banking community on the board at this point?
We, we have some, so we have a mortgage lender, and I actually haven't reached out to him about the idea. We, we really thought we were going to be able to use our community and economic development department, and that just fell through yesterday, so I haven't had a lot of opportunities to think of other options. I'm also wondering if maybe CSC has anything in their realm that might be able to help us with that, so I was going to reach out to them. And we have a person who used to be in the banking industry on the board as well, but she's not actively working in that capacity. So I think we have a workaround, I just haven't figured out what it is yet. And I didn't think it was going to be such a challenge.
Yeah. And have you talked to anyone over at Dev Northwest and Community Lending Works to see if they might be able to partner?
You know, I appreciate you saying that, Dan, and I should have actually put that in my report, I meant to. Actually, Dev Northwest is coming to our coaches huddle tomorrow, and they're presenting information about what their team does, and then we're going to provide information back to them about Stand By Me. So it will, and I'm meeting with them almost monthly to try to, with Brigitte, sorry, with monthly to talk about how we collaborate and partner more. So that would be a great opportunity on that call with the coaches huddle to talk to them about this as an issue.
Excellent.
Randy, you, you mentioned difficulty accessing credit reports. Are you talking about like Equifax and the big credit rating agencies and?
Right. Delaware uses a company called Credco, and as I said, I thought that since they had an existing relationship as Stand By Me, it would be very easy for us to recreate that. But I reached out to Credco, and just the way that Stand By Me is managed in Delaware is a little different. I also, our community and economic development person Sandra was mentioning the fact that just right now, because of the way mortgage rates are and all of those things, credit pulling agencies are so busy, they don't really need more business. So starting a new account is not a high priority for them. They have more work than they know what to do. But that is the type of credit report we're talking about, like through Equifax or someone. It's just a good tool to use with families as they start the process of becoming financially stable, to like have a real clear understanding of what their credit looks like to begin with.
It establishes a baseline.
It is a benchmark for, for credit scores.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Have you reached back out to the office of Tobias Reed as well?
No, Commissioner Oshiro, I actually loved your emails, all the options and bots, and we were just then trying to get the board up and running, so I think that's one of our next steps. I also know that right now, probably for the next week and a half, Mr. Reed has his hands full, so.
After November 3rd.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Randy?
Okay. If not, I'm going to pass it off to Curtis.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. How are you doing?
I'm good.
Good. So I just wanted to touch bases. I wanted to kind of highlight a few items. I believe you guys have our report there. A couple of things, the, the good news that I want to discuss is the VA has actually opened up all CMP exams again across the state.
Excellent.
So that is great news for veterans. They, with them being closed, everybody's claims were on hold because they couldn't go to an exam and continue with that claim. So now everything is starting to move forward, so we're, we're starting to see a lot of new news. The other thing I'd like to highlight too is our numbers are a little bit skewed because ODVA, they're, they're not in the office anymore working, and so they're not able to upload any decision letters, any statement of cases. So our veterans are actually getting information from the VA before we do. And so our numbers are actually not reflective of the work we are doing. The, the numbers are actually pretty darn good, and we're happy with them, but really they should be much higher. But because they're not loading those decision letters, we can't go into the system and update those numbers. So currently, right now, as well, the lottery passed through money from ODVA, our budget this year from them is down 10% because of COVID and the lottery and stuff like that. So was expected, but otherwise, we're doing pretty good. Does anybody have any questions regarding the diagrams and report that I sent you guys?
Not about that, but I would love to know where we are with respect to spending our, our lottery dollars and whether we still are behind in, on that front.
We are, we are. We have a, an overflow of $40,000 last time I saw, and so me and Randy are going to be working on that going forward of what we're going to do. We're, we're going to, we're going to have a little bit of change, I think, in the office going forward. One of our VSOs should be retiring soon, so we're hoping to bring on a new person. That current VSO is part-time, so we're hoping to increase those hours and maybe expand our services a little bit. So we're working on that as we speak.
And have you also been able to reach out to CSC again and renew those conversations about veterans homeless services?
Yeah, great question. Actually, as we're sitting here today, right now, I've just got two emails regarding that, so I'm sure there's going to be some new, new conversations going forward now.
That's great. I'm glad to hear it. There's money on the table, and I hate to see it sitting idle when we know we have veterans that are living on the streets.
Exactly. I agree.
All right. Any other questions for our friends at the COG? Well, if not, thank you for your efforts and your reports this morning, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Have a great day.
I do want to just mention one last thing, and that is that at some point, I, I want to hear more, and this is probably for Ryan, about the Aging and Disability Services and any potential collaboration with our health department in, in that arena, because with our aging population here in Benton County, I don't feel like we're using those services as well as we could, or that they're as well-known as they could be. And I'm, it's just an interest.
Commissioner Oshiro, thank you for that. You know, we just, we realized that that report that we have been sending you, we have to figure out how to tweak that again, but, but I agree that I feel like more outreach between the ADRC and the county health departments would be a great effort.
Yeah. And I think Suzanne is still new enough that she's probably overwhelmed, but checking in with Suzanne Hoffman at the health department would be a good idea. Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Back to the twice-a-month report from the EOC DOC. Teresa has pointed out that the third Thursday in November 17th is the AOC conference, and I, I really haven't checked in on the schedule. Does it start in the morning?
It's mornings only.
What's that?
It's mornings only.
Okay.
So it's 17th, 18th, 19th, and, but that first day is, I think, primarily going to be focused on incoming commissioners and other meetings. And so the, the real more substantive meetings will be the 18th and 19th.
Okay.
So I, I don't know what we want to do. I think it depends on whether we have pressing business and we can.
Leave, leave the EOC report on the 17th and?
If we have the meeting that day.
Okay. Yeah, I think we should leave it for now. Okay? Sounds good. Our next report, and we're basically right on time, is a one-hour discussion regarding resilient community, communities and economy. Sean Maguire and Lalea, do we want a five-minute break before we start that?
That sounds good.
Okay?
Sure.
I'm so proud of us.
Well, we didn't have to walk very far.
All right. Now we're ready for discussion and direction regarding resilient communities and economy. So Sean and Lalea.
Thank you, Commissioner Malone. I just want to check in. I am not seeing Commissioner Oshiro. Is that correct?
She's here. I can see her.
Okay. Okay. All right. Cool.
Thank you for the reminder.
Okay. Thank you. No, no worries, Commissioner. I just sort of, like, oh, shoot. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So this morning, Sean and I are here to talk about this work that we have been performing for the past, maybe, gosh, four months. But I did want to start with a reminder, actually. So I was in front of the board during the goal-setting meeting, and I provided some really high-level updates on all of the program areas that I oversee. And there were some specific requests when it came to the sustainability program. So I have woven some of those requests into this presentation, but primarily, I did send an email earlier this morning that addresses a specific request for kind of a program accomplishments report. So I doubt anyone has had the opportunity yet to review that, but I did want to point that out. So today, we're here to really present next steps around this work. So this work started pretty closely after we reopened, we being Benton County reopened in late May. And Sean has performed this work over the summer. He met individually with each commissioner after initially presenting his findings in late summer. He's performed additional follow-up interviews. He actually also met with Sierra and Brian and Tate with EDO. And so again, really, we're here today to talk about next steps. So, thank you, Sean. Next slide. So this is a follow-up from two weeks ago as well. Commissioner Harameel mentioned, you know, that we really want to be grounded in our definition of sustainability as we move forward in this program area. And so I wanted to put this in front of us to really ground us and remind us what is sustainability in Benton County. And, you know, it was set-by resolution. Certainly, this wasn't, you know, anything that I just came up with for the PowerPoint. It's been set-by resolution, and this slide is actually from last fall leadership retreat when Sean and Greg and Joe presented. So within sustainability, within our sustainability program in particular, as you know, the program transitioned to our office February 1st. So I charged myself, Jen, and Sean with completing, excuse me, a program plan within the first 30 days of that program transition. And so when we looked at the areas of sustainability and where we wanted to develop the plan, really, social well-being and equity had, had gotten a few legs over the past four years. 2040 Initiative really launched that equity committee following the community engagement. And so since the launch of the equity committee, there's been conversations about an EDI coordinator, a health equity coordinator. And so that work was underway at the beginning of this year. As you know, now, our recruitment for the EDI coordinator actually just closed two days ago. And so that program area will be developed by that new role. So Sean and Jen and I really focused on the environmental quality and resiliency section of the program. And we completed an environment-focused work plan that builds per biennial towards our overall the count gas reduction goal. And we started to have conversations, Sean and I, about the next two kind of areas, economic prosperity and vitality, and community livability and opportunity. So as we brought the environmental components of the work plan to a close, you know, Sean and I again started having these conversations. And literally, at the exact same time COVID-19 hit in Oregon, and it took a substantial toll on the county economic prosperity and vitality and community livability and opportunity. So in addition to grounding us in our sustainability program, I also wanted to just spend a moment and ground it in our 2040 initiative as well. Four years ago, we recognized a need for a cross-functional effort to address many challenges and some opportunities that would be occurring over the course of the next 20 years and in the future. So we engaged our communities to develop these core values that you'll see us in right hand. And, you know, when I look at these core values, the thing that strikes me is in the last seven months, we have seen unprecedented impacts, most negative, some positive, to these values that we're working to secure. So, next slide, Sean. So as we've talked about 2040 broadly, we've talked at that top level about core values as an organization. We've developed these focus areas and vision statements. And most recently, last fall, we were working on department goals. The work that Sean and I are, you know, intending to embark upon right now with long-term prosperity of community, food, and economy, we feel is kind of at that higher, high-level county goal, you know? So I'm not necessarily proposing, hey, we walk out of here with a goal that nears the greenhouse gas emission goal. But when we look at county-wide cross-functional work, what can we do at that particular level to secure the core values of our communities? So Sean, next slide, but before I get into the interview, as I did, just want to pause and see if the commissioners had any questions before Sean really kind of got into the nuts and bolts of what we're talking about today.
Lalea?
Lilia, can you hear me? This was Hannah Bell.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
It's not me this time.
Okay, let me see if it's on.
It's off.
You're good now.
Okay, yeah, it's off. Yeah, I was looking at the slide where you had, the one prior to this one was the, the, the one prior to this one. Would you go back a little bit?
Go back a slide, Sean?
Sure.
This one?
No, the next one back.
Go back again, Sean?
Yes.
This one.
There you go. Sustainability. I know that we've struggled with the definition of sustainability in a lot of different ways. I remember when we first started out, we were talking about the three Es of, of, the triple bottom line thing. So I was really kind of interested in terms of the, you put the social well-being and equity and community livability, and I see those as part of the equity piece of that. So I just was curious as to, was there a reason for separating those out especially, apart from the environmental and the economic leg of the stool?
Yeah, Sean, would you know the take to that?
Yes, absolutely. As any topic or any issue matures, we start to see how things need to be fine-tuned. As we've seen in the past decade or so, as more communities will really embrace the new concept of sustainability, I'm thinking of Seattle, San Francisco communities in the country, the whole livability issue has risen as a barrier. Sure, you and Bart, you have really, mass transit is wonderful, live there, but no one can afford it. And so I really appreciate you, Commissioner, talking about, yes, 20 years ago, it was all one, but as more and more communities are recognizing what it means and the benefits and the value of living in these communities, these so-called more sustainable communities, we're also recognizing the economic livability. In fact, not livability, as I get from this point to this point, it's can I afford to live here? And so that's where you start looking at more of the, more recent academic article, these things, and some of the data. Internally, we've seen that have to separate itself out to its own topic. So two or three years ago, when we started listening to, in the 2040, the two-year public engagement, this became a very specific issue, and that's between the council and commissioners. This is how this definition evolved, by kind of teasing out those two. They used to be one, but it's not two.
Right, I just saw that, and it kind of stood out to me in terms of when we've talked about the triple bottom line. And so it still is a triple bottom line, but we're now looking at the specificity of one of those, those, those components of the triple bottom line.
No, I agree with you, Commissioner. And I didn't mean to take it into California, Washington. We have that too, whether you're in Benton County.
Yeah.
It's great, it's great to have these resources around here, but if someone who just purchased a house, it's not cheap. It's great, I can bike everywhere, I can do everything I want, but I think I'm privileged enough to have that opportunity. And I really have that. So I think that that's, that should be heard, and that it will be, that should be separated now.
Thank you.
Just to give you the background, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Sean, I think part of what's a little confusing is that I think of social well-being and community livability together, and I think of equity and opportunity together. So having them split out into those points is a little bit interesting.
Yeah.
And that social well-being and community livability can often be very much in a dynamic tension with equity and opportunity, as you just pointed out, with respect to purchasing a house. It's, and it's that balancing act between the two values of equity and opportunity on the one hand, and having that community livability and social well-being on the other that I think can be very challenging to achieve.
And I think the password to that is foreshadowing, because we're going to each of that in about five slides.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Oshiro. That was a great segue, actually.
Thank you, Commissioner, yes.
So if there's no other questions, Sean, do you want to advance to the next section and pick back up?
That was good. Thank you, Lilia. Thank you, Commissioner.
I would also just like to say thank you, before you dive into Lilia, for framing it, because since, as you pointed out, since this function has moved into the board's office, we haven't gotten the big-picture presentation about how we're looking at the whole of the program. And so this is, again, very helpful, and I appreciate the context.
Oh, good. I'm glad. Wonderful. That was, goal achieved.
All good? Okay, thank you very much. So thank you, Lilia, for the background and Commissioner, for giving us the opportunity. I want to start off with just some quick basics we've presented to you three times before now. I just wanted to give a quick background history of how we got here, of what we heard, and what we want to recommend. So we talked about it late June, and then we're now to conduct these interviews. We'll get into the purpose and questions. But I just want to start with who we spoke with. So we had 19 interviews over the summer. We very quick to you the questions and the methodologies and all that stuff, but just as a quick reminder of who we met with. Then, at a last meeting, those conversations with the commissioners, you identified maybe some gaps or some additional voices that should be heard. And so I've had individuals with each of you. You share with me some individuals or constituents or groups that should be addressed. And so in conflict, we'll riddle you out and reach out to those constituents. And if you look through this, I shared with you last time, there's members of E D A, there's two of these type of members that are from, who were unemployed after COVID, after that first weekend in mid-March. And then after our conversation with the commissioners, some of the constituents that you indicated, one were not just nonprofits, but nonprofit umbrella organizations. So we did reach out to Peggy Monroe and Chris Quarka to kind of get that overview. We also heard that, well, specifically Larry Mullins came up on pre-game meet, so reached out to him and had a conversation. And then we also heard not just Monroe, you see, but also more rural voices, and also a specific request to maybe hear from someone who maybe doesn't have the same political or opinion of government as many of us have. And I talked to Mr. Fieldman, and I heard some very candid that I think that checked that off. So it was nice to go back and to hear from these constituents. I found it very fruitful, giving it another layer of what we're listening to, who we're talking with, and we'll get into more specifics after that. But the bottom line is we did a 23 interviews, just very quick categories, again somewhat arbitrary, but seven from the business economic development sector, five from the ag, rural, forestry, again, two from the unemployed who were personally hit by being laid off. And then, even though I looked, I really tried to reach out to two individuals, Jason and Claudia, that might give us a background on the equity issue, the diversity issue. Many people raised that up, and we'll get to all this more in the next couple slides. And then also education, government, there's all kinds. So, again, didn't talk to all 93 people, 93,000 people in the county, but we worked with this with a broad representation. To get to the purpose, this was in the briefing packet a couple times ago. You know, it was just a chapter perspective and insights. And if our community thinks that we should not go back to where it was, when I say January 2020, that is, the economy they had last year, if that's not the case, one, should it be, and two, what do we do about it? I did it here only because I wanted, I did want to hit, I don't know about too far down the road, but there weren't too many conversations about the word resilient and resiliency. And is it just that this is what we knew, this is what we're comfortable with, and so we want to go back to that? Or was the system itself resilient? And just a basic definition of resiliency, a system that can rebound quickly from a shock. A weather in the Gulf and the hurricane discaner can rebound. Clearly, when it comes to the economy and COVID, this is not something that would be found resilient. And we heard from the, from the public, that was definitely in interviews, that was not. But it's kind of a two-step process. If we don't, if we settle for the weather resilience, then that says we need to change it. Sometimes those terms became a little bit merged. And so I just bring that up as we look forward with some of the analysis, the conversation, to parse those two things out. To get to the general responses, I just wanted to remind the commissioners, more than half of the interviewees specifically stopped me and told me thank you, and they appreciated the county taking the time to reach out and to talk to people. That this wasn't a decision or actions taken behind the scenes, but that they really wanted to hear from us. So you asked me to do this, and I wanted to convey back to you those much appreciation that they took the time to get input from our constituents. Getting back to what we find is resilient or not, the first question was, do you think we, do you want to go back to January 2020? Do you want to go back to pre-COVID economy? Only two said we should and we will. That's two out of 23. Eleven said we shouldn't, and six said we can't go back. So that shared with me that clearly there were some issues. There were two more of these said, yes, we should go back, but even though, even in that case, there were deficiencies. There were big gaps. We saw that from our economic and employment hit. So this kind of sets the stage for us to start exploring, okay, if we find that weather is resilient, or this isn't what we want, where can we go? I did want to share two specific big pictures. And I shared the first one with the last time, everything was thriving until it hit by a shock. Something, a phrase that someone in the second round, the previous one that I mentioned, it was interesting the way she put it was, everything got thrown in the air. Now, do we want to put everything back the way it was, or do we want to put this back differently to be more resilient and more prosperous? I found that a little compelling, so I wanted to share that with you. But before we go on, are there any questions? I want to stop. That was kind of the basics of just the interviews, the questions. We've gone through much of that, but I just want to pay a couple of questions. I just wanted to stop and make sure, I don't have any questions.
I don't see any questions, Sean, so go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so I wanted to also go into some of the major themes. We discussed a few of these. I'm sorry, I started. One was perception and reality. It was interesting, it came up in several interviews, and each one had a slightly different take on it, but essentially, it came down into the who is the we? We in our communities, whether that's the county or the, we think we know certain things, and we know how other people are impacted, but it's not always, our we is not always the actual we. And that work came up in multiple interviews to make sure that when we start moving forward, if we start changing things, to make sure that we understand who the general we is. I can share with you in the interviews, some of you did. Not as personally or impactfully affected by the shutdown, didn't have as much of a response, as negative response, as some of us really were, or their perception, oh, it wasn't that bad. I'm not criticizing them in any way she performed. That was their we. Just to make sure that when we start talking about the we, that we understand and appreciate we're all in this together. So, back to the we. The imagination part came up several times, especially early on. There was a lack of imagination and recognition that this could happen. We've had, I'm an expert, I, this is going to happen, this plan was not designed for seven and a half billion people merging into our natural areas, and a lack of imagination of how we got out. And so how, how can we start thinking differently to put in those systems to be inherently more resilient and more prosperous, really full? So that came up again numerous occasions. Trying to think big, this is no need, there's no need to use such, COVID is not an opportunity to do something big. And just to make sure this, this is not going away. Clearly, this wave, it's going to happen again. And just to truly get prepared, have a strong thinking vision on policies, structures, we talked about the role of the government, which we next, just really starting to expand what we had and what we need to hold. As I said, the role of government, this specifically came up multiple times when I started talking about unemployment. Clearly, we had, and I know we didn't make this political, but it's a fair statement, that there was not a consistent message from the federal government. And so, and then the state got overwhelmed, especially with unemployment. So we had safety nets, we had many inquest from folks to say, well, do we need to reexamine the role of government as well as nonprofits? And this, I really appreciate the commissioners requesting you reach out to the, to the nonprofit organizations in the second round. There is quote of, where are they on the table? Where can we employ them early in the process as opposed to having a call when it's already bad, hey, can you help out with safety nets and the gas and these things? That was a consistent message even beforehand, but that was pretty loud and clear with the substance in interviews, making sure that they're upfront. They're, they are just as important to our economy as anyone else, to our community certainly, but not just as a matter of thought, but as a proactive part of the whole. So it was great to have those conversations earlier. The second one I want to, this is kind of secondary, but I found in the mindset of what COVID was, very insightful. The first one of interviews I had was in the summer, right at the height of the BLOF, of Black Lives Matter and social justice movement and international outcry. And many of the interviewees made that connection. The second one of the interviews happened after the virus. And all four of them made the same comment of, it was interesting to have that more juxtaposition between, the charitable metaphor, but that's the basis, the slow burn of COVID is a more traditional example of emergency management. There is a fire, primarily more of a standard step-by-step reaction versus something that was not standard. And how do we deal with those things separately? How do we address them in different manners? Because they are both emergencies, but both require a different, different reaction response. And the last one I want to come into, this is new. This is something we had not shared in general, or it's not an update. It came up primarily because I met with a nonprofit and then with one other nonprofit, and was a fascinating conversation between, when we started looking at a resilient prosperous community, do we set up the community first in the way the community wants, and then have an economy support that and energize that? Or do we get the economy in first and then make sure that that supports the community that we design? Obviously, that's not an either or. Please don't interpret that as you get one or the other. It's a middle one. But it was very explicit between some voices who, well, we need our community solid, and then a supportive economy versus the other side of that. It was fascinating. And it took a half an hour of both interviews, and I don't want to go down that road here, but it does start to highlight some of the tough questions we're going to have if we desire to move toward a different economy, a different community structure that we have before. Before we go into the next one, I wanted to stop and see if there are any questions from that, what we are so far. No?
Doesn't look like it, Sean, so go ahead.
So when we start getting into what we heard, there's two major things, there's two buckets that we need to go down. One were the major topic gaps, policy issues, however, whatever noun you want. Childcare, obviously, is number one. This is going to be the leading factor for our economy to get back up and running. Equity issues, unemployment, housing, rental, food, education. You can, you can go down the list of the actual policy issues that we need to address. And there is not, we experienced profound gaps responding to COVID. The other one that took up more of the issue, more of the time in interviews and more insightful, was what were the processes of how we respond? Not just what did we respond to, how did we respond, or more importantly, how did we not respond, or how can we better respond next time? Over and over again, the word trust and relationships came over. What I found both enlightening and just made me happy, those are the exact same words you saw earlier in this slide, was the whole purpose of the 2040. The 2040 council, the very, very first meeting was, what do you want out of this? Do you want an action plan? Do you want, no. All 20 said, we want to build relationships and build trust in our communities. And once you have that foundation, it's so much easier to respond to anything, especially shock. And that came up especially. And that came up especially with nonprofits. If you have a trust and you're having these difficult conversations, it's going to make the process look so much easier. So I found those words being just incredibly enlightening and just, yeah, it was happiness. The one operational thing that we heard was, how are these conversations before the shock? There were several examples that shared to me that we had to go through these long conversations and these long processes of, okay, we have this challenge, how do we address it? And we're starting from scratch. In the middle of this shock, as opposed to having the imagination, having the thought to say, okay, if this were to happen, let's have these conversations first, but then we break the glass, we've got a free invite and then we go through. Getting back to my earlier comment about the juxtaposition between COVID and the fires, we have that requirement, we have that for flood, we have that for a lot of these world weeds where we're comfortable with how our emergency management. We don't have that with these big policies. And I want to say, one of the most eye-popping things that those presented to me was, I showed this last time, but just to reiterate, nothing's broken. There's no building in town, we didn't have the earthquake. Everything is open, we just can't be near each other. That's the only thing that stood outside and literally happened, we're still eight months in. When the earthquake hits, wind, flood and salto time is separated. That's structural, so what would happen now, as bad as it is, we still have all the resources, all the infrastructure, web, everything, and we're still having challenges. So that's what we say is establishing this policy beforehand, the way to, we can't even drive anywhere or we don't even have the construction. I'm really gloomy dude today, I'm really not this, I apologize for that, but I'm just sharing my dishes. And then the last one, kind of getting into that discussion of policy, then also it came up with a specific person that had experience in FEMA, where someone dropped in an emergency and we just make decisions. Ask for forgiveness, but at least are making these decisions in this crisis mode, not having decisions, kind of gets back to the second bullet, but who's in charge? How can we make the decisions to move forward and then if something's wrong, you can back out? So at least not sit in there waiting for months, weeks or months to get student services applied. Commissioner Ojero, did I see your hand call?
Yes, I just wanted to say that that's one.
I mean, there are two or?
Oh, no, that establishing who's in charge so they can make decisions.
I couldn't hear her, Sean, could you hear her?
Can you hear me?
I could not.
You cannot, you can't hear me?
Alyssa, is the Polycom on and working?
Polycom is on.
Yeah, it is.
Can you hear me, Lilia?
Unmuted.
I think I've got it.
Can we try it one more time?
Okay, can you hear me?
Wait, can you hear me?
Okay.
I saw your hands moving, but I couldn't hear your voice, I apologize.
And you can't see my lips moving either, can you? What I wanted to say was that on that point about establishing who's in charge so they can make decisions, it's really important, especially in those fast-moving crises, to make decisions fast. But what I also saw here is that we have a community where everyone wants to help. And so in the fire emergency, we had a lot of parallel solutions popping up. And I think that we have an opportunity to coordinate much better and have some sense of roles and lanes and check-ins so that we don't have frustration later from very, very good-hearted people trying to do things that didn't necessarily fit. So I'm glad we're talking about it and I look forward to more clarity in that arena.
Commissioner, thank you so much. Again, I could take your whole morning by getting it all. One of the things that, the second question we asked was, what are some of the positive that you saw, that you just saw with the government, community and across the world was just insane amount of the pulse of community assistance, engagement, support, nonprofits, people, masquerade, all these things. I think what you just hit on was, was kind of getting the, establish the policies, who's in charge because there is that fault. I love your comment about lanes, check-ins, are we, the who's checking the who? It's just to kind of coordinate that before and not during these events. So we heard that as well from the interviews. Okay, so getting to the recommendations from the interviewees. Again, with interviews, all kinds of saying very similar things, but in different ways. It is just to critically examine what happened and to take this moment, this is unprecedented unless you were alive in that community. Very simply, it's squad analysis, gap analysis, whatever you want to call it. Well, 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 and make sure we do that in the future. What didn't go well and address it. And getting back to that topic and processes, let's address those going on the next time or even if we're moving forward, if we're still not out of this crisis, how can we better prepare ourselves? So that was the recommendation from the board. Before we get into that, I wanted to share with you this model. You may have seen it on a test talk, you may have seen it in different ways. It was brought up by two of the interviews specifically, it's called the Donut Model. My background in equal economic, there's different models for these things. But the bottom line is, we need to have some sort of limits or where is that sweet spot between our community foundational elements? And then as we spread out, where do we overshoot into the negatives? So what I found interesting in this model is when we start looking at these in the inner circle, we already had every single one of these were addressed by the interview. Food, we did a great job on that, making sure health, education, equity issues, housing. Start talking about trust, relationship, network building. Every single one of these were specifically addressed in our interviews. And I think that it's a fair statement because it involves you in COVID. Then when we start getting out here is, where have our community, where have our economic activities spilled out beyond our limits? And that's what this model shows. Again, I don't want to turn this into a deep level economic lecture, but we've also heard about the circular economy, which is more based on materials management. We started looking at climate change, pollution, land burden, all these different things. How can we make sure that our community is solid, is it the basic tenants that we need? Address those gaps, what those needs are not met or cannot be met, to make sure enough? That's why I keep back to that whole conversation about community and economy is one before the other or emerging. These are difficult conversations, but without question, COVID made sure we kind of ripped the blanket off that and is forcing that to look at this in all of our critical ways to do this before. So any questions before we move on to our recommendations? Okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. So our recommendation is, well, it's more or less on the spectrum of what we had talked about last time. We just want to be a little more explicit this time. One is to, we talked about convening a formal group, whether that's the next iteration of 2040 council. That certainly comes, it can be done, but didn't exactly see a ticket, take rate. Start over that recommendation. On the other side of the analysis will be, neither of us was creating a analysis. I don't want to see that being ideal. So what we recommend is for us to take the next step. From what we heard from the commissioners, I'm sorry, from the interviewees. That's already a pretty strong framework. We have the questions, we have the issues, we heard what worked for us and what didn't. And we're already starting, even in the documents we provided, starting the very raw template on to see, okay, food. We heard across the board, we didn't really bear the food. Access, I O U for valid, leaders, these things. And to do a pretty full analysis of all those documents, and we didn't do so well on that. And to start using that as a framework. As some of you maybe know, we did the exact same thing with 2040 with the public engagement. There were followers too, we did it in two phases. One, we went out to the community, we heard them, the council created the core values. And then we went out again. We visited all of those listening sessions, all of those visits that we had online and at public events to make sure that we got it right, or I would say the council got it right. And we heard from certain communities, they did not get it right. We needed to find some, so it's very similar to this, what we heard from the interviewees. Looking out to small focus groups or specific individuals and to say, does this resonate with you? Is this fair? Is it not fair? Who are the players? How can we make it better? Those kinds of issues. So what we're recommending is to take the next four to six months and just to do the comprehensive assessment. Squad analysis, gap analysis, to ensure that we're resilient community and economy. We're seeing four to six months, candidly, I think to give an initial assessment, it would be shorter, but just to take in the six weeks between Thanksgiving and New Year's as always. We're also heading into budgets and things, so we just want to be a little bit, give it a little bit more time, especially for the holidays, so, in four to six months. And then with the next step of thinking of, how can we develop a plan of action? How can we pull together the, our partners? What are the specifics that need to, recommendation that need to happen? There's going to be inherently barriers, just to think of it out by head jurisdictional, with the county. We don't have a lot of authority over our municipalities, or we are to have partnerships. We do have the ability to work. So this is our, this is our recommendation and if you want to ask questions, I'd also get your response to that.
I think that we may want to think about some of the topic areas. And I'm fine with looking at the process side all around, but there are so many existing groups that are focusing on some of these topic areas that I'm hesitant to try and distract them from what they're doing. On the other hand, that means that one of the advantages that you could go to the housing community groups that Julie Arena works with once a month in her liaison role and have a focused discussion with that group. Or you could go to the food group that Mac is coordinating and talk to that group. I just don't want to create more overload. I'm also concerned about practicality and as you know, when we're dealing with the, what to do next with our CARESAC dollars, I want to be thinking of resilience and of safety net, infrastructure, appropriate infrastructure in those decisions. And so I'm, there's a sense of urgency of thinking about what this means now and not necessarily leaving it for, you know, six months from now. So I have no, I'm just throwing things at you. I don't have a coherent necessarily answer. And this is, I think these are things that we need to be thinking about for the long term. It's more like the sideboards of a discussion rather than having a plan or a answer.
Yeah, I'm wholeheartedly agreeing with you, Commissioner Ojero. And what you're saying about having some sideboards on the topic, I think that that's great feedback. I also think that your feedback about people are really trying to do a lot right now and leveraging organizations that are already needed. You know, maybe Sean can just get onto their agenda and have that focus group discussion in that way. Absolutely, I think that that's an excellent idea. I just wanted to jump in, sorry, Sean, go ahead.
Oh, no, 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 I, thank you for getting to the real topic. Yes, there's a whole lot of issues to how it can be, but you really hit it on the process. Or how can we engage? How can we inject? How can we address the issues and how the conversations beforehand, which is what you heard? No, I had no intent to elaborate back and for, you know, six weeks of this time on every little nuance that everything's going on. But what we did hear over and over again was that if you do about something, people did a great job. If you didn't know what was going on, how do you know? And so how can we either make it more apparent? Or how can we ratchet up their efforts or whatever that is to make it even more immediate, more connected to those people who need it or who need it impacted that the services could apply?
Sean, I appreciate your realistic timetable of four to six months. I think that with all that has come up in this year, I think it's appropriate to make sure you have enough time to do the survey and get the information. I guess one thought I had is getting back to us on a fairly regular basis, not necessarily in this kind of depth that you're doing today, but just what the, what the progress is, where the roadblocks are and that kind of reporting. So we have a good idea how the project is proceeding.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Commissioner Malone. You know, what Sean and I can do is take a look at this four to six month timeline and kind of build in some milestones and some report out dates. So that way we can kind of let you know when we're going to come back and get feedback because I know that the additional interviews that Sean conducted after meeting individually and getting that specific feedback, while it didn't necessarily change the overall recommendation, I know that those additional interviews were just absolutely critical for Sean's overall analysis. So having the feedback loop with you all, I think is really important during the process.
Great, thank you.
And I do know that there's been at least one community member that has asked about convening a formal group between the city and the county and having the local governments take a leadership role. I plan to get back to him sometime mid-November. But I'm, I'm not necessarily convinced that the city and the county should lead that at this time. We've just got so many other things to deal with. And I do like this middle road of engaging in a series of focused discussions. In some cases with existing groups and other cases pulling together focus groups to clarify where we may want to invest as a county and how we can best advance our core values.
Exactly.
Absolutely. Joe, I know that Sean and I spent a little bit of time chatting with you in advance of today's presentation. That's really all we had today. Thank you for the generous time allotment on the schedule, we really appreciate that. But before we close up, Joe, is there anything that you wanted to underscore or wanted either Sean or I to highlight through the board?
Actually, on several of the topics it relates to or crosses over, things that Kate Porch is working on. And so I think just recognizing that that connection with our Economic Development Office is important and critical. And maybe you could elaborate on that a little bit more or have Sean do that.
I was going to.
Sure, absolutely. I think Kate is still on with us, so Sean, maybe if you want to elaborate on that a little bit and Kate, if you're around and paying attention, by all means, feel free to join us.
Well, just to start real quick, we enjoyed Kate and I's talk on Friday and yesterday about this. Just as a general overview, again, we didn't have any specifics because we didn't have a rule or direction from the commissioners, but Kate, I do know if you had any, any input you want to share?
Sure, yeah, and I am around and mostly paying attention, how about that? No, I appreciate Sean had, you know, has reached out and we chatted about this, you know, this plan that's going forward. I think, I think the notion of engaging with stakeholders is really good. There is an interesting crossover because there's crossover with work of the EOC, right? And the emergency response there, there's crossover with our team and others. So I think we would just really like to continue to be engaged, be at the table early and often. The other thing that I wrote in my notes, Lilia, I know you have that slide with the pyramid and kind of the levels of engagement that we're kind of at the notion right now of the county, you know, having these conversations. Yes, thank you. And then departmental goals and individual staff goals. I think what will be critical here is, you know, just again, being at the table because our Economic Development Office's strategic plan was a two-year plan. And if you can believe it, it's up at the end of June 2021. it, it's up at the end of June 2021. And so I'm already thinking about how we reformulate that, how we look. So I'm pretty excited because I think the timing that Sean and Lilia have outlined will sync up very well and that we can, you know, basically steal these takeaways that Sean is able to learn as he moves forward with these focus groups and then incorporate that into the work of our strategic plan. At least that, that was my plan, if that helps. So, yeah, I think we, we just appreciate being, being at the table and being a part of it and seeing that there's always ways, ways to do this better and ways to think about it differently. I think I was part of though Sean was indicating that a number of the items that he heard in that first round of listening meetings are items that our group is either already thinking about or was, you know, within that strategic plan and in our update, always turn to do better and really keen to hear and incorporate feedback that folks give. So just have to be involved, I guess, how about that?
Thank you, Kate.
Yeah, when I, when I was looking at the staffing that you were talking about, Lilia, in the very beginning and putting staff people or leads against each of those different attributes of sustainability, the economic prosperity and vitality needs to include, hey, oops, needs to include the Kate and her team because they are our economic development staff or balanced economy staff or whatever else you want to call it.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I wasn't trying to imply that we have a staff member for each of those areas.
Okay, what I was-
I just was stating that Sean is not going to be leading the equity program, that we have done the work to have a EDI coordinator to do that.
Okay, and what I was hearing was a little bit of the fact that there's a natural lead on different areas and so I think that as things evolve, again, that issue of lanes and rules is one of those that we need to make sure we understand.
Well, and an advantage of looping Kate and her crew in is that does make some connection with Corvallis and going forward, we can kind of determine how, how involved, how involved the city needs to be in this effort, but at a minimum should be aware that, what we're up to. So, once again, Kate and her crew are in a great position to advance this effort. Thank you, Kate.
Yeah, definitely. I would also underscore Brian Lee's support of this as well. Sean has had incredibly important, interesting conversations with both Brian and Ciara. That kind of helped to develop kind of the approach to this, certainly. But Commissioner Ojuro, in terms of, you know, folks being at his table, of course Kate, but I just want to note that Brian and Ciara are definitely at this table because this is squarely in their realm. And I think that as it can sometimes be a little bit tense with cross-functional work when we play in each other's sandboxes, I think the best part is that we've all played in the sandbox of the EOC, so we know how to play together.
Yeah, yeah, I, thank you, I appreciate that and-
We, we have a large inclusive sandbox, Lilia.
Doesn't mean we don't occasionally get sand in our eyes, but yeah, understood, thank you, appreciate the teamwork.
Well, if there's no more questions, then it seemed like you indicated this is the end of your report, so thank you much and I think my earlier comment about, you know, regular updates would, would be really helpful so that we have some notion of how the effort is going.
Yes, absolutely Commissioner, we should follow up on that.
All right. Well, this is a little scary, a little scary, we're right on time. Item number six, the proclamation recognizing OSU Extension 4H for their volunteer efforts during the 2020 Oregon wildfire response. Seems like only last month we were doing that, but Lynn McGee, take it away.
Good morning, everyone. Sorry for my dramatic noise, the entrance, I was on the phone as I drove and then I was hooking up on my laptop. Anyway, I didn't know where, when you were going to finish your last one. So as we all know, last month on September 8th, we activated our Emergency Operations Center to address the wildfires and we knew right away that we would be anticipating livestock arising, so that day I called Carolyn Ashton from OSU Extension to say help, you know, to help get ready. And within a couple of hours, we had Jack Hurley here, we had four H-ers here, they were setting up panels, they spent the whole night that first night, they were here for those two weeks, 24/7, watering, feeding, taking care of all these animals, especially a farm out here for a while. And so we were trying to acknowledge volunteers. One of the things we're going to do is the Harrison banner, it's been ordered, it will be over, a nice banner over Harrison Street thanking our volunteers, we'll be paying the last two to November. We also had Coastal gave me $5 vouchers for all the four H-ers, so those will be distributed out. So just small ways that we can thank our community for coming together. And I believe it might have been Zan who recommended at the last work session that we prepare a proclamation acknowledging OSU Extension, excellent volunteerism during the wildfires. So that is what you have before you.
Great. I think it's wonderful to recognize some of the people that came up quickly to help out their, our neighbors and really was an impressive effort. Any other comments for Lynn?
I think-
Makes sense.
Lynn, I want to go one step further and say thank you to you and your team and to the collaboration with Lori and her team through all of this because without your, the backbone there at the fairgrounds, the 4H volunteers would not have been able to do all this. So, thank you and just have an incredible appreciation for everything that the fair community has helped do through the fire emergency and contributes to the community year-round.
Well-
Thank you so much. I'm sure that with everybody.
And a little earlier, you mentioned setting up the panels to corral the livestock that was coming in, I think mainly from Lynn, Lynn County folks and because their fairgrounds were, were full and the, I think sometime in the last year, the Fair Foundation bought those panels, so we didn't have to keep borrowing them from Lynn County, which wouldn't have worked in this situation. So make sure the folks at the Fair Foundation know how much we appreciate their efforts and how, how good their vision was that we might need those panels. So, because I know that was in the works for several years and they were available when we really needed them.
It was, they auctioned and 4H had purchased them in the past, rodeo committee had just purchased new panels that we actually use for the horses. So thank you Commissioners, I will definitely share all those things with, with our partners.
Well, and it shows how broad the effort was to, to help people out, so really impressive. If there's no other comments, I would entertain a motion or re, are, are you reading the motion, Lynn?
Do you usually read through the whole thing? I don't know what your process-
At least some of the-
Okay, okay, you want me to read through?
Sure.
Okay. In the matter of recognizing OSU Extension 4H for their volunteerism during the 2020 Oregon wildfires response, it's proclamation number P 2020 01H. During the early 20th century, the Oregon Agricultural College, AOC, became part of the fabric of rural Oregon with generations of kids growing up in 4H. Today, Oregon State University Extension 4H offers training and youth leadership. Thousands of trained OSU Extension volunteers give time to their communities to create public gardens, advise woodland managers and clean up neighborhood streets. OSU Extension faculty across the state offer research-based expertise in health and nutrition, children and families, forestry, agriculture, marine science and community development. From the beginning, OSU Extension's focus was more than agriculture. It was service to the whole family, in the whole community, across the whole state. Benton County has enjoyed a long-term beneficial relationship with OSU Extension. When Benton County was called upon to respond to the devastating Oregon wildfires in September 2020, the answer from OSU Extension was immediate. Carolyn Ashton, 4H Faculty, supported by 4H Volunteers Julie McLennan, Bruce Ashenbrenner and Jack Hurley, organized over 60 OSU Extension 4H members from 10 clubs to volunteer at the fairgrounds. These 4H members provided round-the-clock volunteer support to care for approximately 200 evacuated animals, including horses, goats, pigs, sheep, cattle and little rats. 4H volunteers worked tirelessly with Benton County Rodeo Committee members to feed and water livestock and clean pens in addition to providing much-needed sympathy and attention to traumatized animals. Through extension, OSU veterans or OSU veterinarians were brought on site daily to examine and support livestock health. Now therefore, we, the Benton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby thank OSU Extension 4H adult leaders and youth members who volunteered during the September 2020 Oregon wildfire emergency response and call upon the Benton County community to join in the recognition of these public spirited volunteers.
Thank you.
With that, I would move to approve the proclamation recognizing OSU Extension 4H for their volunteerism during the 2020 Oregon wildfire response.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you Lynn and I think this points out again, a few paid staff and a whole lot of volunteers and somehow you make that model work. And so, thank you from Benton County for showing up and taking care of business. All right, all right, next up. 7.1, in the matter of order, further extending declaration of emergency. Vance Grony.
Unfortunately, this is becoming depressingly routine to bring this forward to you. Obviously, you declared emergency back in March, that original declaration extended through June 30th, you extended that declaration through this coming Saturday night. Clearly, we are not out of the woods yet, so before you is an order extending the declaration of emergency through January 31st, 2021. That date was deliberate, there was a conversation about whether the extension should be the end of this year or some other date. Candidly, it makes more sense to move it into the end of January, we'll have a new board, we don't know what the next couple of months will bring. And also, historically, it's been more of a challenge to get the board together for board meetings as we roll through December. So pushing the emergency declaration out through January 31st is the most logistically logical. And again, as, as Pat and I talked about last week, if things turn around dramatically and you wish to terminate the emergency declaration, you can do so at any time. So, right now, the declaration before you, or the order extends the declaration through January 31st, 2021.
Okay, I would point out the state is doing something similar. Their emergency declaration expires November 3rd, which is a week from today, and they're going to extend that the maximum they can, which is 60 days, which makes it January 2nd of 2021. And so I think we have the advantage of a little more flexibility in our timeline.
No, I think that, I think it makes sense to go to, to the 31st of January, let's, let's be, there's still going to be a lot of work to be done and so might as well-
Yep.
-take, take advantage of the time.
Even just the, if we have a vaccine in hand, even just the act of getting a vaccine out and distributed this-
That's right.
... require some extraordinary measures, so. With that, I would move to adopt order number D 2020 086, extending the declared state of local emergency for COVID-19 through January 31st, 2021.
I will second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have extended. Next up, item number eight, reports from commissioners. I had a couple things here. Had a nice 20-minute chat with President Alexander of OSU, appreciated, I think that was last Thursday afternoon, appreciated his effort in reaching out and figuring out who the community is and I think that hopefully in the not-too-distant future, we can get together in person. He mentioned, I had mentioned that Ed Ray had started school in 2019, had done an open house like he, I think, done annually and that was a very nice kind of mixing of community and OSU folks in an informal setting and he says he is currently doing that on a very small basis, six or eight people at a time, was looking forward to doing something like that when, when possible. So I thought that was, that was good. I've got a email about the Benton County doing some kind of sponsorship for the NAACP annual meeting and so I'm not sure if that's something we've done before or-
We have. We've basically bought, in the way of buying tickets or part of a table or whatever the process is, but we've done that, yeah.
So check and see what we've done in the past and do something similar.
I would be supportive of that.
I would too. Staff can check out the minutes for that, for that timeframe.
The timeframe is coming up pretty close, I believe that the annual dinner is on the 17th, so-
It is what?
The 17th of November.
Got it. Is it going to be virtual or?
It is virtual, but there is also, I think, some-
Sure.
-component of, I'm not sure how they're handling the dinner part, whether they're doing something for folks that are attending. So, yes, I would be in support of that.
Okay. Along those lines, Benton Community Foundation, kind of annual achievement awards are on November 13th, noon to 1:00 and so that's also a mid-November event that's coming up fairly soon. And I think that's all I, I had. Zan, did you want to?
Sure. I too enjoyed-
I too enjoyed my conversation with President Alexander. It was great to get to know him a bit. Had some discussions about universities and the role of higher ed these days and admissions processes and equity. It was a far-ranging discussion, as well as discussions of criminal justice and mental health and the areas where we have some direct overlap of interests right now as OSU starts to set up their own law enforcement capacity on campus. So it was good conversation. I also spoke with Matt Easdale, who's an OSU undergraduate who is in a role of coordinating with local government and helping to get more OSU students involved in local government. Evidently, their government affairs liaison has usually been a graduate student and they're trying to get undergrads more involved at this point. There's a lot of interest there. And so I followed up by sending Mr. Easdale some information about our boards and committees and letting him know that on the WCJC, the Willamette Criminal Justice Council, for instance, there is a dedicated seat for an AS OSU representative. They were very interested in that, as well as the Environment and Natural Resources Committee. That was another one that was of particular interest to students. So I expect that we'll have more interaction with them moving forward, and I look forward to that. I also followed up with Leah Horner. I think I mentioned a couple of meetings ago that I was a little perplexed about the comment that the governor's equity, diversity, and inclusion work was moving into the regional solutions arena. And I didn't understand what, where that was coming from, and it felt as though it meant that there was only a very narrow slice of county commissioners that were involved in that forum versus larger AOC-type forum when it comes to discussing these types of issues and wanted to understand it better. She sent me a couple slides, which I'll be happy to share, that highlight how the governor is using regional solutions structures for a variety of different purposes. Pat, you may have already seen them, to think about COVID economic recovery as well as the typical regional solutions advisory committee and regional wildfire economic recovery teams and then regional equity in recovery councils. So the same regional solutions structures and staff are staffing for different types of conversations in each of their communities. And they're just starting to roll out the wildfire and the equity discussions, and that evidently is happening a little bit organically and not quite as smoothly as they would have hoped because there's so much going on. But I let Leah know that I wanted to be more aware of how regional solutions was working in our communities because I have not been, other than the very brief updates we get at AOC once a month. So I will just stay in touch with Leah, and I have a follow-up conversation with Sarah Means tomorrow. So, lastly, on the housing front, I've been in continuing conversations with the social service providers and folks from the city of Corvallis and our own county staff about both immediate needs for warming shelters for unhoused population here, as well as thinking about transitional housing and permanent supportive housing, non-congregate shelter, all of these different kinds of needs that we have here. And there's a great group that's come together around the table, looking at a couple of different funding opportunities through the Oregon Housing and Community Services and perhaps through other state funds and USDA funds if things are outside of Corvallis. So I think that we're getting closer to having some actual sites and facilities available where we can actually put forward viable funding proposals. That's been a huge roadblock for the social service support entities is that we haven't had actual places that we can put forth to house people. We have lots of good ideas. So I'm excited about that. I think that's it for me.
There is some action along those lines from the E-Board, $30 million for purchasing hotels, motels, but strictly for wildfire
Yeah.
... relief. And so, which leaves us out of
Yeah.
... that
There was
... this round.
Yeah.
But I assume the conversation will continue. And I think the ask was about double what was approved, and so it was specifically for the counties that were affected by the wildfires of last month.
Yep. Yep. They had split it out into two proposals, one for fire-affected communities and one for the rest of the state, or not the rest of the state, the whole state. And so Speaker Kotek is very interested in bringing that issue up again, and whether that'll happen in the context of the E-Board or whether it'll wait until the new session, I don't know. But of course, there's quite a sense of urgency since we can't put people into cold-weather shelters dormitory style right now, except at very low capacity, and that leaves an awful lot of people out on the street. So there's definitely cold-weather urgency to a lot of these discussions.
So stay tuned. One other comment about Leah Horner from our call last week. The increased numbers of COVID cases is concerning, but I think the takeaway message that I got is the tools to address that will be more targeted than they were last spring. And so I think probably we have better tracking metrics and can figure out where the problems are and target those areas rather than as broad a shutdown as we had last spring. So that was good news because the trends, and I think one of our meetings, I remember it was, maybe a week and a half ago, had approximately 300 to 350 cases per day, and the prediction was by November 5th, 500 to 550. And I think we hit that last Friday, then dropped down, but the trend is increasing cases. And so my question was, well, how are we going to address that? And the answer was in a much more targeted function than the first round when we really didn't have a lot of information and a little bit flying blind. And we have learned and adapted.
Well, the watch list as a tool has really helped. It allows us to do things geographically rather than in a statewide approach and gives us the tools of phases as well, so we can ratchet back and do things more effectively.
And along those lines, as of, I think, last Friday, Benton and Glatsup Counties were taken off the watch list, and Lane was put on the watch list, so.
And Multnomah.
Yep. And lastly, I was on a transportation meeting exploring the idea of increasing the Salem to Albany transit options. And so that's, that's in the works and trying to figure out, well, do you try to be efficient and get the most people from Albany to Salem, or do you do more of a trip through the countryside and more stops? And so that's one of the questions that's being dealt with. But I'm glad to see the discussion started anyway. We, like I've mentioned before, we have islands of transit, Salem, Corvallis, Eugene, and each one of those areas goes outside of city limits, but not necessarily making connections for people to have transit as a, as a good option. And this goes along with Highway 99W, Junction City to McMinnville, or
Right.
... making, making those connections.
My first reaction there is that from Albany to Salem, Amtrak does a pretty good job, both with their train and bus service, so that route at least has some coverage, but the rural does not.
There was a mention that Amtrak isn't always on time, and so
That's true. It's not as timely as any of us services, but it's still another service.
Well, but if you have to get somewhere
Right, right.
... at a certain time, then, and the service isn't dependable, then you're not, probably not able to access that. So, Annabelle?
Yeah, while we're on the topic of transportation, it was very interesting at our last executive committee meeting of the Cascade West Area Commission on Transportation was, there's some confusion by some of the participants of the act that do not, they know they're representing a community, their communities or whatever on that, but it wasn't really clear on governance of the acts. And so we got into a long discussion about that. The acts were formed actually by the Oregon Transportation Commission, so they're the really, the head honchos of that. And so the question was, well, what's the connection with the COG? The COG's role is just staffing primarily. So there was concern about we didn't, and seeing the bylaws of the act with, in agreement with the COG, well, there is a separation there. So we had quite a long, lengthy discussion about that one. And I think we got it cleared up, so we don't have to spend a, spend a lot of time redrafting bylaws. But that, it was amazing to me. Usually, these are probably new, new folks that come onto the act, and we, what I think is missing is an orientation that needs to happen when you have changeover of committee members and so that that understanding is there. I too enjoyed my conversation with the new OSU president. It was, he seems like a really interesting guy, and I look forward to interacting with, my interactions will be more as a private citizen than a, than a commissioner, but I really enjoyed the conversations that we had. And I think that's, that's all I have for today.
Okay. Thanks, Annabelle. Joel?
Commissioners, just one thing, and that is, we are having our first meeting of the Technical Advisory Committee under our Criminal Justice Systems Improvement Project. That occurs this afternoon as the kickoff meeting. So you did do appointments to that committee over the course of the last 30 days, and today is their first meeting.
Can I piggyback on that? The, we're also setting up the Community Advisory Committee for that process and looking for people that are interested in participating in that broader Community Advisory Committee. And so if you know people that are interested, please have them contact Nick Kirth.
And that's it, Commissioner?
Okay. Anything else? The only other item on the agenda is number nine and other, and I think we've probably covered other. So
Okay.
Meeting adjourned.